Good morning, everyone. I'll call this to order and ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection. I would ask if there is any issues to rise and report from our in-camera session.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. One matter to report, and that is that the county solicitor provided county council some information regarding a prosecution under our Woodlands Conservation Bylaw.
Okay, thank you. I see some people just entering here, and we have today is Take Our Kids to Work program. And we have with us Jasper Skinner, Don Skinner's building inspector for the county, and Caitlin Pacino, daughter of Steve Pacino. If we welcome you to our proceedings today, and hope you enjoy your visit with us. Counselor Napper.
Who's that chair? Weaver. This is Bring Your Children to Work today, and I'm glad to have my son Todd here with me today. But we have, from Plington, Wyoming, we have our CEO Carolyn Tripp with her son Josh, and our fire chief Steve Clemens with his son Luke and Caleb. So we just welcome them here today.
Okay, thank you. Pleased to have you with us, and I think the other two maybe just arrived. So we welcome all of those that you're attending. We hope you enjoy your day and kind of see what's going on here with county council. We'll try to keep this meeting going until after 11:00, so you're here for the chili cook-off. But I do want to make the announcement just about the top 21. Sarnia Lampton and the group that has worked with the top 21 communities was successful for the third year in a row to be named out of almost 400 communities across the world. So that is very good news, and congratulations to the committee that have worked on that, all those involved, and many more things to come with that as we compete and try to get into the top seven. So kudos to everybody that worked with that, and thanks for that. We also at this time have some presentations and recognition plaques. So if Nicole's gift is, we'll go, come down to the front and make these presentations. Noel. Noel. I'm sorry. I apologize. Noel's gift. Which one is this? That one's Noel's gift. Yes. And I will read this one. For Noel's gift, in appreciation for their generous donation and support for student nutrition programs throughout Lampton County in 2017. The purpose of the student nutrition program is to provide healthy meals and snacks during the school day to prepare students for a full day of learning. This year in Lampton County, there are 42 programs serving 800 students, which provides over $1.5 million meals each school year. The program is operated 100% by committed volunteers and funded through the Ministry of Children and Youth Services, charitable organizations, and community donors. Noel's Gift Foundation has shown great leadership with their support of over $16,000 in 2017 and over $49,000 the last four years. Their generous donation is warmly received by schools and students who participate in the program. Kevin, accepting on behalf of Noel's Gift. We also have a presentation of a plaque here for the, from Pascal Danyat and Carl Fleck, and I believe Pascal's mother, Claudette, is here to accept that. Anyway, we have this today, this on behalf of the Judith and Norman Alec Art Gallery. The plaque on your behalf, our gratitude to Pascal and Carl for the ongoing support of the art gallery. We will make sure that we get that to them. Also, just an ongoing contribution, the staff of Lampton Museum would like to acknowledge the ongoing generosity of our CAO, Ron Van Horn. Ron has donated a number of important artifacts to the collection that complement the role of the museum in preserving and celebrating the rich history of Lampton County. Thank you, Ron, for your continuing support of our museum. We have other presentations, but they are not here. I will read those off. I have a couple out there. So we have Art and Judy Craig. Although they cannot be here today, we'd like to thank Art and Judy Craig for their significant and ongoing contributions to the art gallery. In 2012, in recognition of their family competition contributions, the J. Telford Bang exhibition space was named after their father. We will ensure the plaque is sent to them as a gesture of our gratitude. Lynn Bertrand cannot be with us, representing Imperial Oil Calgary. In recognition of their generous donation of artwork to the permanent collection of the art gallery, we will ensure that a plaque is sent to Imperial Oil Calgary along with our sincere thanks. Brian Groombridge is a local artist born in Sarnia who has generously donated some of his work of art to the art gallery. We are grateful that Brian's creative talents will find a home in our art gallery's collection. Marissa Benardi and John Orvac are longtime supporters of the gallery. In recognition of their contribution, one of the exhibition places, spaces was named after them in June of 2017. There's also a donation at the Oil Museum of Canada. Bill Amers and his business, The Grass Company, for the supply and delivery of planting of 34 sugar maple trees and 11 red oaks at the museum site. This is part of the Lampton Tree Legacy Program. The trees will provide shade for the museum's picnic pavilion and parking areas. Trees also establish what was referred to as Grandma's Sugar Bush in memory of Cindy Amers. Thank you, Bill, for this wonderful donation. So if we could acknowledge those donations and have them, we'll make sure that the plaques get sent out to those recipients. We'll move on to delegations. If I could have a motion to allow our delegation within the, Councilor McGugan and Counselor McDougal. And I call on Steve Pacino, manager of emergency services, to talk to us about the pilot paramedic
Thank you, Warden, members of council. So I'm here today just to provide a very brief update on a program that we started earlier this year in the county of Lampton, and I'll be able to take some questions as we go through the slides here as well. So I'm going to provide a little bit of background on the program, the partnerships and collaborations that resulted in the program. Going to provide some updates and some next steps on the pilot, and then, as I mentioned, be able to answer any questions that anyone in the group might have. So back in 2013, the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care through the Emergency Health Services Branch provided some funding to interested municipalities to implement and develop some community paramedic programs. The impetus behind the programs was historically EMS services were very reactive in nature, and some of these programs in many other jurisdictions across the country have been successful in developing proactive strategies to see high users of our system, and then as a result make contributions to the health system, both in ambulance offload delays, EMS services, and in the greater health system. County council approved the development and implementation of a pilot program here in Lampton in May of this year. So really, the, there's four main things that we are evaluating with the implementation of this program. First was we were looking to decrease the number of ED visits, emergency department visits, to Blue Water Health. Second was to decrease the number of frequent repeat 911 callers. We know that a number of our patients are chronic users of the 911 system, and that could potentially benefit from receiving some care proactively. We're also looking to decrease the number of ambulance offload times in our emergency departments. There's a cumulative effect when we've got, the ambulances are in offload delay, which then pulls them from being available in the community for resources, and it also contributes to backlogs in the emergency departments. We're looking to see if this program could help in that regard as well. And then lastly, trying to engage the patients to see if we can make a positive influence to the patients by increasing their patient satisfaction and their wellness indices. What that is, is it's a formal evaluation tool that was developed by the National Health Service, actually in the UK, that we've adopted for this program here. So back in February, shortly after I joined the county, through some existing relationships with the Lynn, with Blue Water Health, the three of us got together to discuss strategies and potential solutions to mitigate the aforementioned issues we talked about. So we'd successfully implemented similar programs like this in other jurisdictions. We knew that. We knew that there was a willingness to explore some potential partnerships with the various stakeholders here in the county. There was some funding available, and we certainly had community and county support. So from that point, we went forward with implementation of the program. So we began recruitment, selection, and training of our community paramedics. That was completed in July. As far as governance was concerned, we established an oversight committee, and that was comprised of members of senior administration from Blue Water Health, myself, the Rapids Family Health Team, the North Lampton Community Health Center, the Grand Bend Community Health Center, and the Canadian Mental Health Association, Lampton, Kent branch of that. From a medical oversight committee, we're using our existing medical oversight through the Southwest Base Hospital program. And for certain medical acts and certain oversight that, due to legislative constraints they're not able to address, we also included the medical officer of health here in Lampton. So funding. So we received some one-time funding for the development and implementation of the program through the Blue Water Health. That was $235,000 in one-time funding to take us through to the end of March of 2018. We also received some new base funding from the Lynn in the amount of $45,000, and we're in discussions with the Lynn on what that's going to look like moving forward. The program went live in August of this year, and as the program develops, we're just continuing to monitor the metrics that I described earlier, evaluate the program, and then we're having ongoing dialogue with the Lynn and other potential funders to look at continuing funding through the pilot phase if successful. So what does that actually mean in real life? You know, what's this look like? So Mr. Smith, not his real name, was one of our first community paramedic patients. So he's a 60-year-old gentleman, lives alone. At the time of admission, did not have a primary care physician in the community. Several chronic health issues, including some mental health and addiction issues. Currently prescribed 16 medications. Most of those medications were obtained through multiple ED visits. Of course, you're presenting to the emergency department multiple times, you're having multiple physicians one-time prescribing medications in that regard. Due to that, he's largely non-compliant with his meds, so he gets prescribed something, may or may not take them as prescribed. As a result, he was a multiple 911 user, also presenting multiple times to the emergency department. Most recently, one of those admissions resulted in a three-week stay in hospital. So he was one of our first patients referred from the emergency department to the program. So our community paramedics did an in-home assessment of that individual. So two referrals came out of that initial visit. So in contact with CMHA to provide some mental health referrals and get some ongoing support for him in that regard, also some medication compliance referrals to have pharmacy involved in ensuring the medications that he's taking are appropriate. Through the relationships that we've early on established with a number of the community health organizations in the county, we were able to obtain a family physician for him. So now he now has a primary care physician. As a result, they decreased the number of medications, down to 13 medications from 16. He's now compliant with his medications through the ongoing coaching and support there. He has not used 911 or presented to the ED since being admitted to the program. And as I've mentioned earlier, one of the wellness indices, it's a little bit more difficult of a metric to measure, but to engage the patients in setting goals for themselves, and that gets them involved and engaged in their care, one of his goals was he wanted to start fishing again. So actually, you know, he has met that goal to get out doing that as well. So just some very early preliminary program results. So again, I'd stress these numbers because the program is new. This isn't anything we can say with statistical significance yet, however, the trending is certainly quite compelling. That of the 42 patients we've had through the program since August, we've dropped their 911 usage of these patients from 101 911 calls in the period preceding their admission to 36 currently. Probably the biggest one right now is the ED visits, and that was one of the main targets. We've dropped, again, their use of the emergency department as their primary source of primary care from 327 visits pre-admission to the program to 36, and ED admissions from 73 to 13. So again, trending indicates, you know, the program we've established here in its pilot phase is getting very similar results to programs that we know are ongoing elsewhere across the province. So we've, we've got, the program is funded till the end of March currently, so we're working as we move forward with those parameters.
Thank you for that presentation. It certainly looks like a very worthwhile program, and good to see those results. Questions? Counselor Gillis.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of county council. And thank you for your presentation. I am just blown away by those statistics. 82 and 88% drop. I mean, wow. I can't imagine how that is translating out into the emergency department itself, but I'm sure it's significant. So when we're seeing that kind of success in the very early days, you're just three and a half months in. What is going to be your reporting mechanism back to the ministry? Because it would be a shame to see a pilot project that appears to be extremely successful fall by the wayside and everything go back to the way it was. So can you comment a little bit on that, please?
Thank you for the question, through you, Warden. So part of the evaluation metrics, so when the programs were initially started, the initial ones that were started back in 2013, the ministry did have a number of reporting metrics that were required to obtain that funding. So the base funding that I referenced earlier, the new base funding that's coming through the Lynn, has very similar reporting requirements attached to it. So we've aligned those reporting requirements, so we are reporting on those to the Lynn, and then part of those ongoing discussions with the Lynn are to take back, obviously, my ask will be with the Lynn at the appropriate time to seek access to additional funding from the ministry. So the initial, there's about 22 programs across the province that have been continually funded from the early adopters. So the ministry did contribute about $6 million in ongoing funding for that. Lampton County wasn't initially part of that first group, but our hope is now that we do have this pilot that we can dovetail into that funding envelope.
Okay. Counselor McDougal.
Yes, and thank you very much for your presentation today, Mr. Pacino. Understanding that the doctor-patient relationship and the funding attached to the same is changing in Ontario, and we've been given to understand that a doctor is now receiving an allocation per patient in his practice for a whole year. It's great to see Mr. Smith's story where he was actually able to acquire a physician, and that's great if there's transportation for people to get to their family doctor. I'm thinking of the isolated person living in a rural area who may well be assigned a physician, but then will not be able to necessarily get to that physician. But more important, I'm wondering if in the long term, if the doctor-assigned model fails to roll out success in this program, would it be conceivable that our EMS service would be assigned some sort of orphaned, that's not probably the right word, but people who are not able to either get to a primary care physician or acquire one because of other factors? Would you eventually be able to build a funding model on a certain number that will never ever be able to develop a regular doctor relationship?
Okay, I'll, again, through you, Warden, attempt to answer that question for, wow, big question for my first time up here. The, so maybe I'll break this into two parts. So the first part would be through the existing model. So one of the reasons that, because one of the common questions are why paramedics? You know, why isn't another allied agency or health profession looking at some of these models? And what we've learned in, from other jurisdictions and why this model's successful is, is paramedics are already strategically located throughout the communities. They're already mobile. They're already used to being in people's homes. So I think to answer part of your first question, the model that we see with attaching to a primary care physician, and even with the patients that do have a primary care physician, a lot of the, a lot of the value that we see in the CP program is, is they become the eyes and the ears for that physician. So even though, let's say, Mr. Smith now has a family physician, the community paramedics in his home or in his community setting providing treatment, there's often a dialogue, I mean, to be perfectly honest, you know, our CPs are often texting now with the primary care physicians, which mitigates that need to actually go in and see the physician. So even for those patients who do have them, who have the transportation issues or the isolation, we're bringing that service to them in most regard. So hopefully that answers part of that question. That's kind of the way the program's set up in that, because one of the other things that we've learned as well is that when people present to their family physician, that's often not an accurate depiction of what they're like at home. So I'm going to go see my doctor tomorrow, so I'm going to make sure I have a shower this morning, I'm going to get cleaned up, I'm going to get in to see him or her, and that's not often an accurate reflection of what actually their home, you know, that might have been the first shower they've had in two weeks, or, you know, they haven't had breakfast for three days, and the family physician, the primary care provider, doesn't really have an appreciation of that. So that's one of the other successes that we're seeing with that. As far as the part two, I think you're referring to the patient care groups that the Lynn's been directed through the patient's first act to set up. That's probably a broader question I'd have to take back to look at. Certainly, you know, there would be a mechanism, I think, if this program's successful and continues on, to work with our stakeholders to develop, you know, a care plan or an action plan for the really vulnerable patients that are identified. At some point, whether they get identified through the emergency department and we access them that way, or they start calling 911 a lot, which they'll access through us, or if there's another mechanism, say through a family physician that says, you know, I need some help. But usually, these patients self-identify either through 911 or showing up in the Emerge.
Okay. And just to follow up, sir, my only concern is that our EMS gets adequately funded on a go-forward basis so that we can continue to provide a vital service, because I totally agree with you. And recall a discussion last year, I think his name is Martin Garret, who headed up the Lynn, who said, "We really do need another model in Ontario that gets to people where they live." And I know in our other bucket of services that we've developed, some of them pilots through our social services division, that this is probably one good way to touch people where they live and make an assessment that's probably more valuable to the family physician than the person actually getting to their office. So we'll just hope that moving forward, you get the funding that you need so that we can continue what I certainly agree is a vital service in our community and a value add to take pressure off the Emerge departments. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor McGugan.
Thank you, Warden, whoever. Thank you ever so much for that presentation. I had heard it before, and you impressed me with the number that some individual called 187 times so far this year to 911. And I guess I've got a couple comments. One is, are there two ladies and two men that have been trained, and are they on seven days a week, 12 hours a day, not 24? And then the follow-up, Counselor McDougal did mention it. Do you see ongoing funding from the province? You said you had funding to the end of March. Do we see funding having to come out of the municipal budget or Mr. Taylor's budget next year, or how's that going to continue on? Because it looks as if it's successful.
Yes. Again, through you, Warden. So we currently have, staffing model is seven days per week, 12 hours per day. It's one community paramedic on per shift. They work in a non-response capable vehicle at present, and we're training, we're looking to train a couple more to make sure we have capacity should the program move forward. As far as the funding question goes, again, we are actively engaged in discussions with the Lynn. The ministry has set aside a funding envelope, which is new base funding outside of the regular municipal 50-50 funding for emergency services. Again, how that's going to look, we don't know just yet because we weren't part of that initial group. So, you know, we're actively engaged with the Lynn to try and, you know, wedge our way into that, into that group. So that's as much as I can provide right now, because I just don't know what that looks like going forward right now.
Anyone else? Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
We'll stay tuned and hopefully move forward with the full funding. Item number nine is the minutes of the council open session from October the 4th. Counselor Case, seconded by Counselor Bruswitz. Questions? Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Just a comment at the back, it talks about the recent Las Vegas tragedy, and the framing of that was that expressing our condolences to all those involved, and it wasn't just strictly the appreciation. Appreciation was a part of it, but it was to express condolences, because that morning that we were here, it was the fourth person that just passed away from our country. So that was the framing of that statement, and I think it was missed and drawn.
Just make that a little friendly amendment.
I would appreciate that.
If that's okay with the mover and secander. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Correspondents? We have a number of items of correspondence. Do we have a motion? Counselor Broad, receive and file. Counselor Marriott, seconded. Any questions on any other correspondence? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Item number 11 is... Item number 11 is some minutes from some different organizations, Community Development Corporation, Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnerships, Tourism Sarnia-Lampton, and the Woodlands Hearing Board. Counselor Busi? Move that we receive these for information and file. Seconded by Counselor Arnold. Questions? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item number 12 is a report for a motion, Infrastructure and Development Service Division. On page, this is dealing with the oversight lowered corridor, there's a report there, and there is a recommendation on that. Moving that, Counselor Case, the recommendation? Seconded by Counselor McGugan. Questions on this? Counselor Knapper?
Thank you very much, Warden Weaver. Is industry putting, how much money are they putting into this? There's a lot of people down there that's gonna gain a lot out of this, or are they done?
Okay. Mr. Cole?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We've had quite a bit of support from SLIA, which is, which is the industrial organization that's really spearheaded this from a private sector initiative. Up till this point, they've contributed quite a, quite a bit to the development of this project and getting, getting the business case and the MIG study that was done to identify all the improvement areas. They really put in quite a bit of time and money towards that. Right now, due to the timing of this funding proposal, we're still in discussions with any private sector contribution towards this project as a whole, so I don't have an answer for that, but I can tell you that we're trying to work with many levels of private and public partnerships to help offset the funds that the municipalities will have to pay. And, and right now, it's the federal fund that, that needs the commitment from us to proceed.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I didn't catch who, was that SLIA you said? Who's that? I didn't hear.
Through you, Mr. Warden. SLIA, S-L-I-A, is, is the Sarnia-Lampton Industrial Alliance, and, and it's a conglomerate of the, it's a working group of the manufacturers and large industry that service the, the big plants. Is that fair enough? I'm looking to, I'm looking to a SLIA representative to make sure I've accurately reflected that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor McDougall?
Not a question, Warden Weaver, but to you and members of county council, in addition to supporting this recommendation, I think it would be prudent, under your signature, if you could work with our Infrastructure and Development Services to remind the province of Ontario that when we went to them for RED funding a number of years ago, the provincial representatives said to us at the time, "We need to see local buy-in, we need to see local commitment," which I believe we have in terms of our business partners and certainly lower-tier municipalities and the county itself. But I think it would serve to remind them that they said at the time they expected to be approached for monies for the bill at the end of the day, and just to remind them of that would be a good move. I think it would be useful. It may not net any results, but I think, like many other things, there's no harm in trying, and under your signature, maybe they would at least respond back to us why they changed their minds. Thank you.
Okay. Do we want to add that to the recommendation, that there be a letter of support sent for this, as well as? I'll turn to the mover.
Well, Mr. Warden, I would assume that, I mean, with us supporting this, as well as the other municipalities, that there would be a letter, obviously, communication going back to them on this particular issue. So, I think the motion speaks for itself. It never hurts to send a letter.
Right.
But at the same time, I think this encompasses the motion, and again, working with the other municipalities in the spirit of cooperation for the good of our community. So, I'm fine with the motion as is.
We will, we will have made note of that and make sure that that is communicated of council's support for the project, so. Any other questions regarding that? All in favor of that? Opposed? That's carried. Committee minutes. The AM committee minutes, I would call on Chair Gillis, Counselor Gillis.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. The Infrastructure Development Services, Public Health and Cultural Services met on October the 18th, and we had a fruitful discussion, and I present the minutes to you for consideration.
Okay. Item number one is correspondents received and filed. Information reports regarding Sarnia landfill. Motion number two, received and filed. Item number three, the motion operations planned for the winter season. Item number four, on the Churchill Line Road allowance. Item number five, dealing with Fragmities Control and Coordination Program. Item number six, Waste Collection for Donaphemia. Public Health, item number seven was a motion withdrawn. Item number eight was asking for a report regarding the Board of Health. Item number nine, information reports received and filed. Item 10, regarding food insecurity in Lampton County. On the Cultural Service Division, item 11, Convention Center referred to Budget. Item number 12, Museum Collections Management Report. Item 13. Item 14, regarding the use of libraries during municipal elections. Counselor McGugan?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, members of county council, I think it's great that you come up with this idea, opening the libraries up. Now, in my municipality, we are voting by mail, so I just wonder, by opening them up, what does that really do for the residents of Brook Alvinston? They do have the right to go to the municipal office, and then they can get a ballot there and go into another room and vote, so I'm not, it was a great idea, I just wonder if it's, I was gonna call Darlene, I did not do that. I'm not opposed to be in the moment, I just wonder if there will be a use.
I think from the discussion, if I recall, it was, the option was going to be made available to the communities. If the Chair, Chair Counselor Gillis would like to speak to that, or?
Thank you, Warden Weaver, yes, that was the overall discussion, that they would be opening up for those that were going to be, the municipalities that were involved in the e-voting and telephone voting, and those that weren't, would be, we wouldn't be opening up for special hours. And if you look at the preamble of the motion, we had exempted court right in Sombra, so we can include Alvinston in there as well, if I, if I understand procedure correctly. Correct? You're welcome.
So, do we want to make that amendment? I think it was, I think it was left flexible.
It was left flexible.
Counselor Broad?
So, just to understand, we don't, we have mail-in voting too, so we have two libraries that will not be required, so.
So, Mr. Mayor will be, he will get that information then, to take those off the list.
Okay. When you present the minutes for adoption.
I will.
Okay. Item 15 was a review of the Sarnia libraries. Item 16 was adjournment. Counselor Gillis?
I move that the committee, the AM committee minutes be adopted with the exemption of the amendment, with an amendment, I'm sorry, to item number, motion number 14 regarding the use of libraries during municipal elections, so that it reflects that not only the libraries of court right in Sombra, but also the libraries in Alvinston and Florence be excluded from that recommendation. Oh, I'm sorry, missed Inwood, yes, as well. So, just so we're clear, it is with the exemptions of court right, Sombra, Alvinston, Florence, Inwood. Shetland has one as well? Shetland?
Seconded by Counselor Marriott. Any questions regarding that? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Our afternoon committee, Chair McDougall?
Warden Weaver, members of county council, the Long Term Care Corporate Services Finance Facilities and Court Services and Social Services Committee met on the afternoon of October 18th, 2017, and I present for your review that day's minutes.
Okay. Long Term Care Division, item one, correspondents receiving filed. Item two, council member pregnancy policy. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'm just wondering why we would have a different policy for elected people versus regular employees? To me, there's this discrimination piece that starts, not that I believe that anybody that runs for elected office needs to have any time off, because I don't personally, because if you can't make one meeting a month into this chamber, we got a serious problem, and you're allowed to have a couple off without any, any issue. So, however, being we have to have a policy, I guess this is a good place to start, but why wouldn't it be just the same as our employees? It's just another piece that the elected people get kicked under the bus, and we're not as good as our regular employees in the municipality, and I don't, I don't think that's fair. But that's just my own humble opinion, sir.
Comments? Stefan?
Thank you. Again, good question, and of course, the policy is county council's policy, so if county council wishes to do something different with the policy, then of course, it's within your prerogative. But in terms of the direct question, i.e. difference between council and, secondly, employees, I think it's really, the difference really rests in the demand over the individual. Here, as you've put it, Counselor Arnold, there's one or two meetings per month, whereas an employee is committed, for the most part, on a full-time basis, so therefore, the demands are quite differently. But again, if, if, if council believes that they want to extend the pregnancy parent leave to a period that is tantamount to an employee, then you're looking at, with the amendments to the Employment Standards Act that are coming into effect come January 1st, 2018, you're looking at a period of almost close to two years of absence. So, that's an issue. The second piece, the policy as you see it now mimics the first draft that we saw from the province. The province in Bill 46, which essentially is a bill that's, that died on, on the order table, recommended, proposed a 20-week leave of absence. But again, that 20-week leave of absence, how you define the length of the leave of absence is really up to county council, but the proposal that you saw, that draft that we put together, was based on what we saw originally from the province.
Counselor Han?
Mr. Warden Weaver, just an additional comment. Again, it was, it's the policy that will be coming down from the government in 2019, and we were being proactive in bringing it in in 2018, recognizing that we're going into an election year, and it was, if there was anyone that was sitting back that was wanting to run for office and concerned about a potential leave, then they would know at the time to put their name forward, that they could have that leave.
Counselor Arnold?
To follow up, Warden Weaver, that was never my issue. I understand the preamble going into it, but we don't talk even in here of how we have a quorum. Like, if we have a whole bunch of people on here that decide to take off 20 weeks, and you don't even have a quorum on council, and that's not addressed in this policy anywhere, so how do you pick and choose who wins and who loses? Because I don't think that's right. And I'm not saying that would ever happen. If we had that many young people that were on here, now, if it was for grandparents and great-grandparents, I think I might qualify, but, and looking around this room, most of us might, however. But I just think that we should be consistent, understand why we're doing it, understand the proactiveness, all those good things, but there again, I just don't see why we should be treated worse or differently than our actual employees. I think it's kind of funny in my mind, but anyways, that's enough.
There is another piece of, regarding that policy, where, and I don't remember the specific details, but you are allowed to appoint a replacement, like currently, if, if one of us is off because of a car accident or illness or whatever, no one can come in our place, but if it's this mat leave provision, you can appoint coverage for that period of time, for that community.
To speak to that?
Yes, correctly, really on the two, on, on, on two points. One, the notion of quorum. Counselor Han is correct, under the municipal legislation, section 267, if anybody's to be absent for a period of a month or more, then the local council can appoint an alternate council member, so that would address any quorum issues should they arise. Secondly, in terms of policy development, all very good questions, and again, this is entirely left to county council in terms of how you wish to define your policy, but I've always adopted a practice, at least in my career, where we're, where we're trying to trail blaze, when we, when we trail blaze, we go slowly. So, here, if you have a policy in place, and you see that after a year, two years, three years, four years, it doesn't work for you, you can always alter your policy at any point in time. You can amend it.
Counselor Knapper?
Yes, Warden Weaver, they made reference there to that new legislation that comes out, that's not legislation yet, is it? I thought we had the option to do that. I didn't realize that it was, was law now, that it was proposed legislation coming forth for 2018, where you could appoint a delegate to, am I correct, or is it, you said it's already law?
That's correct. Under, your, the alternate provisions are currently prescribed in the municipal legislation, that's under section 267, if you take a, a good look at it. In terms of the amendments that we're looking at, the policies that we're looking at, this requirement only takes effect March 1st, 2019. We're just being a little bit more proactive in it. March 1st, 2019. Correct.
Counselor Arnold?
Final follow-up, if I may, Warden Weaver. If we look at our policy, nowhere in this policy does it say that we can appoint someone to take our place. And then, if you want to complicate even more, under page two of three, while a member is on leave of absence pursuant to this policy, if you look at item B, that member may attend in person or any other means permitted under the municipal act, any county council or committee meeting, then to events if he or she chooses at his or her discretion, and may cast any vote. So, do we have some municipalities that are gonna get two votes now, or two people voting? But it doesn't say that. And that's what I say, this policy needs to be fixed if we're going to implement it.
Speak to that?
Sure. A good question, and I believe Counselor McGugan had asked a question as well at, at committee PM. In the event an alternate is appointed, in the event an alternate is appointed, then of course, the member is no longer a member for voting purposes, because they're, they're replaced under your local bylaws by whoever the alternate is. However, if there's a question about interpretation on that point in this policy, then of course, it could be easily amended. So, those provisions where we say that in the event of the person, or the member who's on leave is entitled to, if they wish, continue to participate, we could simply say, save and accept where an alternate member has been appointed by the local tier, that then, that individual member will not be entitled, of course, to continue to do that. So, it's a simple amendment that we can easily bring, and it would clarify the interpretation issue for Counselor Arnold. issue for Counselor Arnold.
Any other questions? Item number three is Finances and Court Services correspondence. Item number four, information reports. Social Services, Item 5, correspondence. Item 6, information reports. Item 7, regarding Home for Good proposals. Motion, Item 8, Ontario Early Years Initiative. Item 9, domiciliary hostile review. Item 10, Social Infrastructure Fund. Item 11, 12 was in camera. Item 13, open. Item 14, motion to adjourn. Counselor McDougal. Counselor McGugan, question?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, members of County Council, I was at the meeting, and Mr. Innis did announce just at the end of the meeting that we've been granted a AA minus. I should have asked then, and I did not, think quick enough. What is the highest level we can get, and what do we do as Lampton County to get to that level, and is that even possible?
Mr. Innis?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The highest ranking, of course, is a AAA rating. To get a AAA rating, you basically have to be a financial powerhouse and a star in whatever you are doing. With regards to the county's rating of AA minus, that is basically an increase that we've had. When we were up until approximately three years ago, we were in the A-plus range, which is one mark below that. AA minus is consistent with other municipalities of our size and our complexity. The things that are holding back the county from achieving a higher credit rating than we -- or bond rating than we are right now is essentially things that are largely difficult for us to control or to mitigate, specifically the fact that the economy in this area is somewhat constrained with the opportunities that we have, and that the population is fairly stagnant as well. We -- I think council has been aware of these things and has been looking to try and promote them as much as possibly can be, but again, these are long-term facets that make it difficult to deal with and are largely beyond local control to influence to a significant degree. So if you read the rest of the report, and again, that was circulated out to council as well, it indicated the fact that our debts level was well-controlled. They indicated that they felt that we had a strong management and control over budgeting. In general, as I said, it was more the environment in which we're operating that is impacting the rating than the operation of the county itself.
Follow up. Counselor McGugan?
Quick follow-up through you, Mr. Warden. Are there any municipalities in southwest Ontario AAA?
Not that I'm aware of. The best I've seen is a AA. I'll call on Counselor Gilliland to --
Warden Weaver, I'll move the adoption. Six, eight minutes.
Seconded for that. Counselor Han? Any other questions? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. I don't see any items tabled from a previous meeting. Notices of motion have been listed. Other business? Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of County Council. I just wanted to make the county councillors aware that the Lampton Community Health Study, which they have been the sponsor of for so many years, is reconvening this afternoon. I've called for the board to reconvene, given what has been happening in the press and also at Queens Park over the last three weeks. We will be going through our agenda, talking about next steps, specifically as it relates to a confirmation of a meeting that I had -- I received yesterday with Minister Ballard. As we know, Minister Ballard did commit 1.7 million towards our study. We want to make sure that that money is for the study, and if I'm looking at the numbers that he quoted, that's exactly what we asked for. So I wanted to make you aware that that is happening. We'll be discussing next steps, and our meeting with the minister is supposed to be within the next two weeks.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Case?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Warden. Just a little bit of clarification. I received an email on this subject. I'm just wondering, I don't think I'm part of that group anymore, but I was sent the email. Does anybody know here, can we confirm who is part of that group working with Counselor Gillis? Because I'm sure I'm not, but I have been stood corrected before. So does anybody know who is involved in that meeting from County Council? Just a question.
Yeah. I think it's the original group, the people that were on that, from my understanding, that are being asked to meet again. Counselor Gillis?
I can speak to that, Warden Weaver. We've had many people over the years that have been, or also people who have been alternates for, and as people have resigned or shifted that responsibility over, we have contacted those people. For example, I don't believe that Counselor Arnold received a notification, but his alternate, which is Counselor Veen -- sorry, Counselor Gilliland did, and I believe Counselor Veen also received as well. So we were trying to contact the people that were on that list as of 2015, 2016. So for Point Edward, for your notification, it's Janice Robson. So we're just in the process of pulling this all together again to make it as accurate as it is, and just for discussion purposes at this time. But I need some direction from the board when we meet with Minister Ballard. And also, I've been informed that Chief Rogers will be at this meeting today as well.
Okay. Counselor Case?
So, Mr. Warden, not to beat this around too much, it's great that they're getting together, but clarification. Is it each of the geographical areas that have representation on this committee? Because again, I had it sent to me, and I just assumed it was done by error. I was involved one time when I was warden of a county and so on. So just so I understand, we do have Counselor Veen and Counselor Gilliland, who are going to be there, and of course, the chair. Is there anybody else that's supposed to be present at that meeting? Because I just want to make sure that our geographical areas is, of course, is Platoon, Wyoming, Warwick, and Lampton shores, and I know, Mr. Warden, you're there, obviously as the warden, I think. Am I correct? I'm just trying to get a handle. I just wanted to make sure that if it's geographical area, that each geographical area, make sure that we have representation there. Again, I'm not trying to make this hard, I'm just trying to clarify, and I know it came about real quickly, so I'll look for some kind of answer. Thank you.
Counselor Gillis, and then Counselor Veen?
Um.
Okay. Counselor Veen?
Thank you, Warden. I was appointed by this council to be the member for this council, so I'm not representing Oil Springs, I'm representing everybody in the room.
Counselor Gillis?
And yes, to your question, Counselor Case, the affected communities were the ones that had people directly appointed, so that was St. Clair Township, Point Edward, and the city of Sarnia, and Anjarang, as well as the county of Lampton, as well as SLIA, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, Lampton Public Health, and I think I've got -- that's -- I'm sorry, I can't read your lips today, Andrew.
No, so naming the membership, definitely so. The victims of Chemical Valley are also represented there, as well as the Community Roundtable.
One more? You're good? Okay. Thank you for that. Any other business? Just a reminder that the Lampton Public Health is hosting a flu shot clinic here today for county councillors and staff to get your flu shot. It's that time of year. Seeing no other business, notice of bylaws?
Thank you. It is moved by Counselor Gillis and seconded by Counselor Bruzowitz that bylaws 30 and 31 of 2017, as circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
Questions? All in favor? It's carried.
It is moved by Counselor Bruzowitz, seconded by Counselor Gillis, that bylaw 30 and 31 of 2017, as circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. And motion to adjourn. Next regular meeting will be Wednesday, November the 29th, beginning with an in-camera session at 9:00 a.m., Committee Room 3. Question? Move to adjourn. Counselor Veen, Counselor Napper? All in favor? It's carried.